About a month ago, we were approached by a group of folks that have deep roots here in Lincoln County. Actually, they are Lincoln County graduates. And their thought was, they would like to sponsor a scholarship for a Lincoln County High School student. My understanding is this scholarship would be in any school, anywhere. And that they want to make sure that education was deemed important. Because in their conversation, it appeared that education was the game changer for them. We talked quite a length about what that would look like. They made lots of contact with some folks that are willing to help out. But my advice to them was, let's bring this before the board and let the board kind of mull that over. And then we will start talking about particulars. So I guess we are fortunate enough, we've got some folks that are actually the authors. Mr. Stacker and Mr. Eskew and Mr. Edwards, they actually are the ones that came up with this brainstorm. So if you guys want to step up and just kind of talk to us about what's your thoughts about it?
And I'm assuming everybody has received the whole one-page word?
Yes, we've seen it, yes. So we've got the gist of what you're proposing. So would someone like me to speak?
Yeah, I'll let Harold go ahead because this was his genesis.
Well, he's...
Yes, he stood up first.
Mr. Edwards?
Hi. I know Steve and I know Mr. Wilkerson. Mr. Wilkerson is my high school geography teacher. But I was a 1971 graduate of Duval High School. And I always had this fantasy that if I won the lottery, the main thing I was going to do is have a scholarship. Well, I'm never going to win the lottery. So I started thinking about other ways to do this. And one of the things I thought about was, when I was at Duval High School, I graduated in 71. Those four years that I was there, I am almost sure there were no children in the high school whose parents had a college education unless their parents were teachers. And I have nothing against teachers, I became one for 40 years. But there were no role models in the community for people that wanted to do other things to know that it was possible. And since then, I've become aware of a lot of people from Lincoln County who have gone on and developed national and international reputations of what they do. And what I thought was, if we had a Hall of Fame for the county, and if we selected two or three or four people a year from the different old high schools, and if we had display cases at the high school with these people's pictures and their accomplishments and where they were in the world, that you never know when a child is looking at something and getting influenced by that. And since a lot of these people have also become financially successful, we were going to ask them for a donation. And we were going to run this money through the Greater Canal Foundation. Now Judge Stacker and I have already met with the Greater Canal Foundation, and they've told us how much that they will charge to do that. And that group would be in charge of selecting who received the scholarships. We would have nothing to do with that. So it would be totally neutral on our part. That's the general idea. If you had any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
The only question I have right off the bat, a committee would be established to identify and recruit these folks now. Are you... Would that mean the foundations have to do the same thing? Is that what they're...
That's for the identifying people in the Hall of Fame. The way that...
Oh, that, I'm sorry. This would be the scholarship, once it would receive the scholarships, is the Canal Valley Foundation?
The Canal Valley Foundation. The way they explained it to us was that we give them the money, they invest it. You know, they have professional people to invest the money. They'll send us a report each year, how much money that they can give, how much money we can give away. And then they form a committee to judge who wins the scholarship or the scholarships. And we, I think we're allowed to have one representative on that committee.
I was hearing that, I understand that. So I guess my question relates to the committee that would try to identify the potential Hall of Fame people.
Yeah, well, when we, it was originally when we started this, it was Judge Stacker and I talking about it. Then Rick came on board. And I've been going from the county for a while. And so we decided that we wanted to ask the couple people that teach at the high school now to help us identify people in the community. And we thought the first year, so no one thought that anyone was being slighted, we would make sure we had one member from each of the former high schools. So there would be four members in the first class of the Hall.
Potential inductees?
Yes.
Well, I'm just, you know...
And, you know, I'm sure, you know, there would be some way of people who can nominate people each year.
I was just thinking that the committee that's going to select, how the composition of that committee would be like, I mean, I could envision, you know, a couple of teachers from high school maybe.
Yeah, we have two already.
But maybe others from the community. I don't know how big a committee that that would entail.
Well, we also thought about getting, you know, a couple people who are not from Lincoln County, who has no influence, you know, it would just be, you know, they would be reading the people that were nominated, what their accomplishments were, because, you know, I'd like to keep it as neutral as possible.
But for sure, I think on the committee that selects the Hall of Fame members, you would want at least one person from each region of the four regions of the county, if you will. You know, from the parts, Guyan Valley, Duval, Hamlet region, which I think we could do. And just one other thing I wanted to add about the scholarship money itself and using the Greater Canal Valley Foundation. A couple points about using them is, first of all, they handle everything. Nobody has to deal with the paperwork or the money or anything else. And they do it for a relatively low 1.6 percent fee. Second of all, you know, they select, so it's all neutral as to who gets the scholarships. But then, more importantly, it will be an endowed scholarship fund so that it continues, you know, ad infinitum hopefully, and continues to grow and expand. Because in addition to the Hall of Fame inductees every year, which we would be asking them for a $5,000 donation, we can also do, we can get other donations and pass-through donations. And I've already, as Harold has as well, and Rick has as well. I've talked to a number of my friends and friends and colleagues who are ready right now to donate to this scholarship fund. So we, I mean, it can be a real and productive and enduring thing, I think, if we use the, if we do it this way.
I think we all understand each other.
And we also thought that we pick one of the inductees from each year to go to the high school and speak to the freshmen, not speak to the seniors, and say, you know, there's going to be this scholarship here at the end of your four years. So you can go to school any place you want to go. And now's the time to start working on getting that scholarship. And, you know, we have big dreams. We hope that it's going to be more than one teach, one student here also.
Well, I mean, the concept seems great. I'm saying, remember's the board having it all? So I think we're all on board on the idea behind it. And how the logistics of that would work, like, you know, the high school, where they're talking with students and all that, that would be at the high school level. The only thing I'd like to see would be develop the composition of the committee that would be established to recruit those people from. I just think it should be defined, and that would be up to, you know, maybe Mr. Snyder could get with that. But, you know, how that would be done, like Judge Stacker mentioned, maybe you'd have a person from each of the four areas of the county. Maybe it would be high school teachers. It just seems to me like you'd want to go beyond the high school level and reach out into the community, to have community people from maybe the different areas. But how that would be done would be up to you all. But that would be the only suggestion I would have, is just that it'd be a defined composition and not just be...
Well, we also wanted to get people from the community because quite frankly, the first people, some of the first people we want to get are people who are older now, and we want to get them now. And I don't know who those people are. People who've gone away and, you know, done things, and you never hear about them. I farmed with a man for years until I found out his brother was the general manager of the Detroit Lions, and he was from, you know, Yawkey. I never knew that. I'm sure there are plenty of stories like that in Lincoln. And that's why I want, I want the kids to see that in the hallway that, you know, you know, it's just as great here as it is anyplace else. And, you know, I'm really happy, I saw in the paper the other day, we were talking on the way here, that I saw that almost every county in West Virginia lost population last year, except seven, and Lincoln County was one of them. So I think good things are in the future for Lincoln County.
Are there some, for us to move forward, are there things you would like to see happening? Or you just want to give us our, the blessing to try to set this thing up and to come back and sort of say, okay, this is the way the community's going to be set up? Is that not...
Me personally, I just see it being done, you know, our blessings, such as... The only thing I'd suggest, and is what I made before, I just think it would make it more complete if you knew what the composition of that group is going to be from year to year. And it might be, you know, altered. But once again, with that being done at your all's level rather than us being involved.
Would it be appropriate for the board to have a motion to endorse this concept? Would they go forward? Would that be okay?
If you so thought that was the idea, you agree with me?
No, certainly, I appreciate it. Ultimately, our goal is the same as yours. It might help us as we try to get money to be able to say, okay, the board education said, yes, this is a good thing.
If that's a good thing, then we're on board for it. Our goal is the same as yours, that we need that, you know, ultimately, that students would, you know, be provided scholarship funds to go to school. And we're all on the same page on that. Mr. Eskew, you want to sit back there and not say a thing?
I hope so.
If you are, I'm kind of in shock, you know. But did you have anything, Jonathan, you wanted to add?
No, sir, I just, from our perspective, we're very appreciative of Harold, Judge Stacker, and the people that have taken this initiative. It's, we know we've had great people in this county. And for our kids to be able to see that is very important.
Absolutely. We just need to clarify this thing, as Mr. McKip and I were talking, is that, and I'm second on that, it's Lincoln County High School or the Lincoln County High School. And it seems to be, from what we've talked about, you know, it's not necessarily a graduate of Lincoln County High School, but any high school in Lincoln County.
Oh, yeah.
Jeff and I had that conversation, I said, it's either "uh" or "the," Jeff. We agreed on that part.
I think it's a very wise move that you've gone with the Canal Valley Foundation. And it sort of takes, you know, the thoughts of misdeeds away from all that part of the institution, I guess. We were able to have that idea, it's great.
Yeah, and it's all volunteer on our part. All the money is going to that. And we thought about talking, one other thing, the, you know, I was a teacher, and I've seen what the West Virginia School Board Authority has done with some of these new schools, all this fabricated metal and stuff. I got online and looked up the new Lincoln County High School, and I thought it was going to be like one of those places. And I went down there for the meeting with Mr., that is one beautiful place. It's like a small college campus. I mean, that's something to be proud of.
Very mad.
And we're talking to, we're going to talk to a furniture maker about the display cases. And so they would be the same architecture as the building, so they would fit in, so they don't stick out like a sore thumb. And Mr. Snyder had a great idea that they would be, the most recent grad, the most recent inductees into the Hall would be right where you come in, the door. And then they would be moved down when the new ones came in the next year, and those people would be there.
We'll leave that to your all's discretion. Well, sounds great, I appreciate it. Thanks for all your help.
Thank you.
Glad to see you.
You guys will make a motion?
Sir? Well, at some point, Mr. McDowell, I know you're good at these things. We expect that you're going to provide, bring the reservation for the board to have a friend.
Okay, sure, I'd be happy to do that.
You don't have one in your pocket already?
I heard it won't be too long.
No, we'll be glad to do that. It's not on our agenda to act on that, so we just need something to put be placed on.
We'll put on the next...
Okay.
Yeah, we'll meet on 30. Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to move... We're still going to stay on the Lincoln County campus, apparently, but we're going to move. It's a little bit different idea here. Casey Bieber's going to talk about the high school campus approval, including disc golf.
Yes. Hey, guys, I haven't had a chance to do this before, it's nice to meet you all.
Glad to have you.
So that is an Inaba course installation catalog that was given to me by this Johnny Sias. He's a pro disc golfer that actually graduated from Guyan Valley High School in 1970. He has won the world championships three times, and he's designed over 30 courses. And when I had the idea to do this, he said, I've been wanting to get a course in Lincoln County for over 30 years now. It's a great sport to introduce to the high school because it's virtually free to play. And a lot of kids that are just not athletic enough to play basketball and baseball and football will be able to come out and take advantage of this course, if I can get permission to put it in. I want to start an after-school program next year where me and Ms. Holly Bryant and Mr. Adam Riazzi are going to stay after so many days a week and try to teach the kids what the sport's about and all of the just character traits that go along with sportsmanship and playing the game. It's the same as golf, it's just that you play with frisbee discs instead of a club and a ball. And it's very non-invasive to the campus itself. In fact, the areas of the campus that we would want to use to make the shots interesting are near the edges of the property where the tree line is. And that's the exact part of the property that the other people do not want to use, you know what I mean? Everybody else is putting soccer fields and baseball fields in the center of the campus. We will actually be utilizing a portion of the campus that's not currently being used. There's a big flat down towards the front that the FFA used to plant crops in, but then they switched over near the soccer field. So there's a massive tract of land down there where we could just clear some brush and weeds. And this Johnny Sias guy that's a course designer can help me put in a nine-hole course. And then I think it would be a great thing for the students and the community.
It would all be confined to that side and not the other side of the, where the future football assembly would be?
Correct. We don't want to step on anybody's toes on plans. I know there's a tennis court that's supposedly maybe going in there in front of that trailer.
We don't really think it's going to be there any longer, but...
Okay.
Anything could happen.
Like, I've been playing for six or seven years. There are two courses in Huntington that I play a lot, and one of them is exclusively in the woods. I'm not sure how far our property line stretches beyond the tree line, but it would be like, we're not going to be throwing right across where the football field is supposed to go in or anything like that. It's like, we want to stay near the tree line so that the frisbee actually has an obstacle to throw around.
You'll need to get with Mr. Snyder, and you may have to get Mr. Smith over there. Because our property line really doesn't go very far up on that bank back there. But down under the cornfield, pipe area, there may be more potential there. What's the average length of a hole?
The holes on the professional large courses can be very long, but the courses around here in Charleston and Huntington usually range from 250 to 350 feet.
Just like the frisbee, I throw my frisbee, then I go get it.
Well, they're heavier. I thought about bringing one in, they're quite a bit heavier. The pros can throw them upwards of 600 and 700 and 800 feet on flat ground, but our kids will be throwing them 200 to 300 feet.
And hopefully, you have to put it in that little basket?
Yeah, that picture on the back there, the reason I came over today is, Dana said, anytime there is like a concrete installation of anything involved on campus that requires board approval, and those would need to just have quick treat poured in a hole so that they don't go anywhere when we get our big storms that we get out here. But even at that, if some sort of a situation arise where we would need to change a pin location because it was in the way of something, all it would be, would be digging it out and moving it somewhere else. Mr. Sias, the pro that's helping me design it, or hopefully helping me design it, he said the entire first year that a course is in, you just want to use natural tee pads, grass with maybe like a staked 2x4 or something to show where you throw from. Because inevitably, you would find one out of the nine that you want to change the position or anything.
So you would go through this concrete process?
That would be the goal for season two or three, once we've solidified where we want it to be. But like I said, we'll be out of everyone's way towards the tree line.
And out of curiosity, now when I get up close to the hole, what, can I dunk it or just flip it in there? Or what do I do?
Yeah, like generally, maybe 100 feet and in, you use what's called the putter. The discs are actually, the lip changes, the ones that people throw 700 feet have a very sharp edge around them to cut through the air, and the putters are fatter. But, you know, you just, there's technique in all of it.
I'd like to talk to Kirk out there and wear him out on this.
Yeah, it's a lifelong...
He may find something he could beat me in.
Literally, Mr. Riazzi brings his kids out there, they're like age three and seven, I believe, or four and seven, and they love it. And I see gentlemen out there in their 60s and 70s playing. You can play all four seasons, and you can get your starter disc for like $7.99 at Dick's Sporting Goods or somewhere around here. And then it's completely free to play. That's why I love it. Like, we've got students that just can't make the football team or can't make the basketball team. I have one guy that started playing football this past season and quit halfway through because he was just kind of out of shape and couldn't hack it with the conditioning aspect of things. And he, just a week ago, told me, I really hope that you get this going because I can exercise and participate in that club and not have to run and feel like I'm going to have a heart attack from going through the conditioning. It's great for people that aren't on that level of athletic ability that some of our main athletes are on.
Do you have any questions?
You're talking about starting down there for the, next to the riverbank, down that...
Yes, and if we decided on trying something new, because the pro designer hasn't been out yet, I'm just getting ideas in my head to show him. He was actually going to come out earlier today and something came up. But we're going to walk the property, and I'm going to let him say where he thinks it would be the best. And I'll tell him, we can't go there, we can't go there, there's this and that going in. I'm going to kind of concede to his professional opinion because he's designed over 30 courses. Then if I think it looks like it's not stepping on anybody's toes with other facilities on the grounds, then I can actually bring you guys back a nice aerial photo of where we want the pins and everything.
That's what we need, everybody would like to see where they... Now, as far as the cost of what you're going here?
He gets us wholesale pricing. He's sponsored by this Inaba company, and he actually gets paid to help, to consult and help people get courses installed. I wouldn't have to raise the money to pay him, but this company actually pays him because he gets a small commission on each basket sold. I want to start out with a nine-hole course, and the wholesale pricing on that is 325 for the baskets. So what we've done is, we've already approached several local businesses, and we're up to like three or four now that have pledged $400 to sponsor a hole. And that buys the basket and eventually the concrete tee pad. It takes one half of a yard of concrete to pour the tee pads, which, once again, that's at least two years down the road from now. But we're going to ask for nine local businesses to sponsor holes. That's what they did in Huntington and Ashland and Charleston. And then I'm actually on the minutes for the July 2nd County Commission meeting. I'm going to see if they might match what the businesses will put forth so that we have plenty of money to do what we need to do. We might run into unforeseen costs, I've never designed a course before, but...
$300 or $400 per hole, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, if we do a nine-hole course and get nine $400 sponsors, that would be 36. If we got anything around $4,000 or more, I would like to get the kids to join the club, like a tee shirt or their own putter, they're very cheap, you know. I'm just expecting there to be unforeseen expenses that I'm not anticipating, yeah. But he's, like I said, he's done over 30 of them. And it's very minimally invasive to the campus. Like, it's, the baskets will have less of a footprint on the ground than setting a trash can out there.
The putter, you called it, how many club or clubs or what do you have? Do you have a long distance one in the putter or...
There's long ranges, it's very similar to golf. There's like really long ranges would be like a driver, then there are fairway discs. There are like more mid-ranges, which would be like a five wood or like a seven iron. And then the putters are for shorter stuff, 100 feet and in. But the more you play, you tend to gather a bigger collection of what you carry with you when you play. But honestly, the kids just starting out could get by with one putter. The pros would come to the courses in Huntington and beat all of us just using a putter. You really don't need more than that when you're learning the sport.
I see this young lady here has a little bag you keep all, is that like your putter bag or golf bag?
Yep, that keeps all your discs and water bottle and scorecard and everything in it.
Now, what, you know, as far as members of the community, if they wanted to participate?
Yes, definitely.
How would they get access to the discs?
Well, there are several businesses that sell them around here. There's a guy in Charleston at Redeemer Lutheran Church has its own course up there, and he has probably the best disc golf disc store in the area. He has thousands of discs in there. Dick's Sporting Gods, Glenn's Sporting Gods.
I mean, each one, you'd be responsible for getting your right...
Oh, no, no, I forgot to even mention that. I talked to another supplier of disc golf merchandise is Vibram or Vibram USA. They're famous for hiking shoes, a lot of Merrell shoes and hiking boots will actually have a Vibram sole on the bottom. But they also make disc golf discs. And one of their sales rep guys sent me 105 discs absolutely free that I have in a box already waiting at the school. After the spring games day the other day, they were giving the kids a reward for finishing the summative assessment. And I brought two of my portable baskets from home and had a bunch of kids out there throwing our free discs. And they love it. Like, that's the third year that I've brought my portable baskets from home. And I can just tell that I'm going to have, I think, dozens of kids that want to do this with us next year. Mr. Riazzi and Ms. Bryant will pull students that they have in class, I have students in class. And it's going to be a free, easy way for them to get exercise without having to join the football or basketball or baseball team, soccer. Mr. Snyder, I think, is working on getting some sort of a grant where we can have a more thorough activity bus. If we hopefully end up getting that, then we will be able to keep the kids for this after-school disc golf activity. And then instead of running the main roads, the buses will run further to their home. Now, that's not obviously a given yet, but that's what I'm hoping for. I still want to do it even if we don't have that. But that's basically it. It's just a cheap, healthy activity. We want to open the campus to the community, people can come and play that don't even have kids at the school. You know, people come and walk around the school and stuff. This would be something else that they could use the campus for to be active.
Well, that's the reason I was asking about, you know, having your own equipment. Well, I guess at this point, we would just like to see, I had something, if we'll thank Mr. Snyder or Mr. Smith to make sure that we're within our property confines.
Okay.
And just give us an idea where you see all the holes being...
Okay.
And I think we can go from there.
Yeah, I was curious, I've never seen anything like this before. The disc goes into the basket, right?
The disc will fly horizontally, and the chains soften it, and it drops into...
Oh, it drops into this?
Yes.
In the bottom part, like?
Yeah, the disc flies in horizontally, and this is like a softening blow, and it drops into the basket.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll be able to get it, I've got the thing there.
Oh, I can do it.
Bang it right in. All right, I appreciate it. Just whenever you go over.
So it sounds like they're going to try it out first, right? So once it comes in, they're all going to come and play this competition.
Well, I would have gotten there by myself first.
It is, it is so much fun.
Do we have outside cameras over there?
It is a lot of fun. Well, thank you all.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, this one was an interesting thing when I saw that. I'm like, Larry, when I first saw it, I thought you had to get it.
I thought you had to go in the basket.
That's the reason I thought you had to like, John, that or something. I can see more there. Okay, on to another area entirely. Mr. Cummings is gonna talk to us about ladies' purchase of the school buses. We've talked about this once before, so.
It's been kind of brief since we have talked about it before, but before we begin that, there was one other thing that I wanted to bring up and let you know, maybe a couple things. One, we've kind of been in the process over here of getting some prices and trying to build us an indoor storage area so that when we have things that are vendors that bring stuff in at evening, we have an outside door so that they can come, gruff up equipment, parts to the garage, places that we can store them. Our upstairs is not really capable of handling the heavier items, so as we get a little farther along with that, I'll bring you maybe a diagram of what we want, and like I said, we're working on getting prices for that now, so we'll have more to come later. But what I did wanna mention about the bus purchase lease, what you have in your pocket is just a draft of the lease agreement, but what I believe we need to do first is the resolution needs to be completed, and that will allow us to continue with the process of purchasing the buses. Once we get the resolution approved, then we'll be able to complete the application. We'll be able to order the buses, and to say, you know, the buses, when we order them, are not already built, so they have to go through that process of actually building the buses, and they have projected the first part of October would be when we would take delivery of the eleven buses. And if there's any other questions about the finance lease agreement, I have Bernie, the expert with us.
Brendan gave us a replacement every month of your package, so it's a little bit, I think Bernie sent that out just a second into the resolution.
Resolution.
Has our lawyer looked at this?
Our lawyer?
No, I think the only thing that we have, this was for review only, what we have here.
It was a generic, as we talked to them today, Bernie, correct?
Yes.
This is a generic review only. We can send that on. All that we want this evening is this resolution, just a resolution. Then they will send a particular application. Did you get that application?
Yes, actually, we've already done that lease application.
The application has been done, but once we do this, then they'll be able to plug in our actual numbers to the lease agreement so that, so that we'll have the payment schedule and that kind of stuff. Now, there are parts of it, like one thing on the lease agreement is on the example, it asks for a VIN number, but the way they do the buses is on making them until you order. I believe it's step twenty-one or twenty-two in the process before they even have a VIN number assigned to those. So, I think, once we get started, we'll have the numbers for the lease, but there'll be some particulars that will have to be added to the lease agreement later on, so we understand that.
Eventually, will we have to approve something else later on when the actual numbers are there?
Yes, we will actually, once we get through this and we get a listing of our equipment, we'll do a lease purchase agreement, which is, there's a draft in here.
In fact, we're not through that point yet.
No, the only thing out of that draft that we're gonna prove is the resolution. Just one piece is all we're gonna do, and the rest of it will have to come later once we get numbers on the vehicles.
Okay. Now, we'll start producing until we finalize the second part of it.
I believe what he told me, it would be somewhere in the first or second week of August before it had a VIN number assigned, but there may be something that they can do, you know, that we can, that's just that, that part of it, I guess.
Once it's kind of fine, they're not gonna start rolling them off until they?
Yeah, they're not gonna roll them off until we give them a letter of.
You guys are gonna have to adapt apparently then to begin the school year. From our conversation before, of using different types of buses for various runs that might change based upon?
Well, we can go ahead and make those changes from our conversation before. The only difference is where we have a pusher now, when we replace it, it will be with a smaller bus, so we'll go ahead and make the changes.
Where they would go off, the other runs up to some of the holes and stuff would still go on as you planned it in.
Yes.
Change the buses.
Change the buses.
Well, these buses already have all equipped on, but we want on, like the camera?
No, they, we will, we will have to, we've got two choices with the cameras. Now, the cameras can, or can be paid for with a bus replacement, but when we buy them, we prefer usually to buy the camera and we'll be actually getting a price, and we're gonna shop with Heritage. We've been buying from camera people, Angel Tracks, straight, you know, straight through. Heritage is a distributor for them, so we're gonna get a price, and then I'm gonna give it to them saying, "Now, this is what we can get it for. If they can make that price, we'll go ahead and buy it from them." And because we have eleven buses instead of just a few, we'll probably have to have them install us so that that will be here then, but that's not included in this plan.
What about the, be, be able to transfer any of the, I can't think of the correct term for it, but the key system of drivers?
Yeah, that's no problem. That's just too strict.
Oh, so it'd be easy to transfer?
Yeah, it's easy to transfer. And one other thing which kind of falls in line with this in a way, so, you know, with this going through, we have looked at identified about ten buses out here that we want to sell, and prefer to do it because of the shape they're in at a local auction this time. Some of those buses, a lot of those buses have a camera system on, so we won't take that camera system off, and we'll have to buy new hardware and wires, but that'll save us some money too if I take it off.
When you say local auction, you mean?
I like to do one here, and yeah, last time we did it online, the shape that these buses in, I don't think that we'll get the money out of it on the internet that we would here. I'd like to try to get rid of them here first.
We did quite well.
Yeah, we did, and a lot of the issues with these buses, some of them are not driving. Some of them are more electronic in nature, just like their new cars. The older buses brought a better price down south than these will because of their ability to work on them. But whichever direction you guys want us to go, as far as that goes, we're familiar with it. I just know we've got ten out there that we need to get rid of, and the quicker we can get rid of them, the better off we're put.
Well, that's what I think, especially if you make this purchase here, you're gonna have additional ones that are gonna have to place.
Yeah, gonna have to place.
Where it's put.
Yeah.
Well, we can talk about that.
Yeah.
What is, just to clear up later.
Can you bang that gentleman?
Lady?
No.
Okay, Ron. All right, that's all the items in our presentation, so let's go to the administrative section. Do you have a motion, please?
I'm ready.
Ms. Smith made the motion, have a second?
Seven.
Mr. Wilkerson, Mrs. Luiz.
Okay. Item A is for the adoption of a new job description and approval to post a Dean of Students 2014-2015 school year. The adoption of revised job description and approval to post Assistant Superintendent. Item C, adoption of a revised job description and approval to post Twenty First Century Community Learning Center After School Facilitator. Item D, adoption of revised job description and approval to post Twenty First Century Community Learning Center After School Teacher. Item E, approval of amendment to resolution adopting measurement periods for determining full-time employee status under the Affordable Care Act. Item S, outstate trip for LCHS students Chloe Curry, Tindie Atkins, Charles Walker, and Lindsay Richards to University of Redlands, California to attend College Summit Workshop June 24th through the 29th. Expenses are paid by College Summit with the exception of local travel while in California. Item G, out-of-county student transfer for the 2015-2016 school year as qualified from Campbell County to Lincoln County, seventh grader. Item H, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as chef of runs for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings when they have completed volunteer orientation. Item I, a computer repair service contract agreement with RISA II for fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2015, according to the terms of the agreement. Item J, a contract with Chief Loben Resort to provide accommodations for Duke Oxford KIA professional development training August 9th through November 2015, according to the terms of the contract, paid for through Title I. Item K, a contract with Brewley Schools to provide professional running for Midway Elementary Teachers, July 9th, 2016, according to the terms of the contract, paid for through Title I funds. Item L, to approve a resolution declaring the need to finance the purchase of school buses and enter into agreement with Country Roads Leasing LLC to finance the lease purchase of ten seventy-eight passenger buses and one eighty-five passenger bus. Master Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement is attached with resolution as attachment five. Item M, outstate, out-of-country travel for the following employees. Mike McCormick to the University of Redlands, California, June 24th through 29th, 2015, to Chevron students attending the College Summit Summer Workshop, and for the county funds. Perg Atkins to Jackson, South Carolina, June 8th, 9th, 2015, to pick up military training, provided through to the JRATC program, no cost to the family. Deirdre Roberts to Germany, June 18th through 20th, 2015, to serve as assistant group leader and student Chevron for LCHS International Trip, no cost. Item N, to ratify a superintendent's two-day suspension with pay, three-day suspension without pay for service employee or violations of the Affordable Code of Conduct. And item O, to ratify a superintendent's two-day suspension with pay, three-day suspension without pay for service employee or violations of the Affordable Code of Conduct.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Well, I'm amazed, well, we just, in fact, just gonna be one year.
Item A, adoption of a new job description approval to post a Dean of Students. Will you intend to be due to redo it every year?
Not the job description, Richard.
Not the job description. That's it.
I think I designated that 1415 so that you'd know that it's gonna be filled hopefully this year.
So, Carol?
Before the end of this school year, for fiscal year.
And I guess, come springtime, the decision being made whether or not to continue?
Of course, need it.
First now season will roll around.
But that doesn't mean it's strictly.
I think that's what Fred asked. That's what I'm getting at, is what we're. I agree with what Carol's saying. We're approved, the job description and all that, and Fred's question is, as far as the continuation, the continuing need for the job.
And again, we look, they'll be looking at that within the personnel season, it's all, all jokes.
Just like any job.
Mr. Andrew will be here kicking his foot in.
That's right.
There, he did show up there.
I did, I did a graduation.
All right. Any other questions? I had one, or Jeff, I'd really just like to see some clarification, please.
Okay.
On item B. Now, the, just your explanation or your proposal as far as the salary of the Assistant Superintendent, do you explain that to everyone? We've talked, you explained it to me, and I think it's.
Well, my salary's ninety-three seven, and for me, I think it's, when we looked at the salary schedule, Bernie and I looked on this last week, and I know she can answer some questions related to the salary schedule, but it was pretty much unique to just my situation. But regardless of the amount of experience or years of service that the person would have, I think the salary should remain the same as I get ready to post that position. I think it's important that in order, an effort to deepen the applicant pool as well as people out there may be fewer years' experience as others that would look at that salary and that would be, you know, enticing to them. So, I've asked the board to be able to leave that salary at ninety-three seven, with an understanding if the state gives a pay raise to teachers, professionals in the future, that this person would be eligible for that pay raise.
Just wanted to clarify that, because in the past, you know, all these positions were based upon degree, years of experience and all, which oftentimes someone that wasn't in the systems or a younger person would have a lower salary. The high school principal salary is in the mid-eighties, I think, so, you know, you'd reach the point where that person's salary wouldn't be much greater, and if you got, under the old system, it's conceivable that you can have a younger person's salary might not be that much. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood what they're proposing here. Okay. Okay, anybody, nothing else? Carol, do you have anything on those?
No.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, then I'll call and place them. All the administrative items, send it all in, yes, please.
Yes.
Yes, okay, oh, yes. Okay, Ms. Luiz, could you share with the public, the employees that are there?
Yes. Tanya Linfield and Christina Terry.
Okay, all right. Let's move to the finance section then. Kind of a motion.
Hold on.
Ms. Curry, Smith, taken by Mr. Wilkerson. Bernie?
Okay, item A, scheduled invoices totaling one thousand two hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents, and schedule is attached. Invoices available for inspection in the central office. Item B, adoption of revised salary schedule of seventeen effective immediately this fiscal year 1415 to include a Level Nine Dean of Students, and that is for the Gynne Valley position. Item C, adoption of salary schedule sixteen effective July 1st, 2015, with revisions to Level Fifteen Assistant Superintendent. That's attached. Item D, adoption of salary schedule for professional service personnel for fifteen, sixteen fiscal school year. So, that's just all the new salary schedules for next year. Item E, monthly financial statements for the month of April and May.
Do I have any questions? I have just one, Bernie. On the monthly financial statement for May?
Yes.
On page fourteen. About halfway down through there, it has board members, I think, that's what. I'll let you catch up. The first column is thirty-eight thousand one seventy-five.
Okay.
What is that?
That Charles Sal?
Salary's for board members. Salary and benefits.
Okay. Well, because I, you know, if I go over a couple of years there, I get to two oh seven.
Oh, I see, yeah, I see, yeah.
Somebody's getting something I'm not getting. Is that what I mean?
Oh, it finally came out. Steve, that is some type of a count code that's got switched in those years, and I'll have to, because what happened a couple of years ago, we, everybody was under a one-two-three-one-one, and then we had to split it out, and so somewhere in that split, I probably need to redefine the code, and I will look into that and let you know. But the thirty-eight is probably, yeah, because if you look under central administration, you know, you're not seeing anything there, the line above it, so I'll have to look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I.
And I will get back.
The thirty-eight, if it is, that's?
That's probably about right.
From July until now, that would be?
Up through May, uh-huh, that's about right.
That'd be about right.
And that's because we're having three meetings a year. Did we have three meetings or three meetings a month? We had three last year.
Pretty much so, yes. The number equaled out. And I, that wasn't, you know, what got me.
Yeah, I see that, yeah.
When I went over to those other years.
And that's a coding. I'll have to go back and look where those central office split out of there.
Okay.
And I'll get back with you guys on that.
Okay, good. All right. That's it. Got my question. Okay, nothing else on the finance section, I'll call for questions. Is that all yes, is that a yes on the finance? Oh, yes, Carol?
Yes.
Okay, oh, yes, everybody. All right. Okay, the personnel schedule, do you have a motion, please?
I'm ready.
Carol made a motion, seconded by Mr. Curry.
It's pretty colors, it's like... Should be very nice. Maybe you don't get one. There it is. Okay. Section A is for the employment of a short and or a long-term substitute personnel. B, reemployment of professional personnel for school year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Section C is transfer of professional personnel. Section D is transfer of service personnel for school year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Section C was for that, for that as well, two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Section E, transfer of service personnel pending return of regular employee. Section F is employment of extracurricular personnel for the summer, two thousand fifteen. Section G, leave of absence. Section H is for retirements and or resignations, and that's noted under the effective date for the retiring or resignation. And then abolish professional personnel postings for CTE supervisor LCHS and for the legal psychologist out here because the number of days on the posting was not enough. We have to post it every day. Yes. Any questions?
Questions, if not, we'll call for questions. All in favor of the, all the personnel items as presented? Is that all yes?
Yes.
Okay, oh, yes, on those. Okay, we're down to comments and concerns. We have board meeting scheduled for fifteen, sixteen. Chairman Key.
Mrs. Powell, I've been working on the board meeting schedule for next year, close to Mrs. Powell. I agree with you on that.
Mr. Austin.
I'm just gonna tell on it if you didn't pass that.
This is a draft. I want to work that for next year, hey, or something.
For those Tuesdays, Mr. Key, what's that? At least Tuesdays?
These are Tuesdays, first, third, and last Tuesday each month, just as we've done this current year. Dan, I have a proposal. I've got an idea. I want to run past you. And if you want to poop and walk, that's okay. But I've been thinking about that last meeting each month, possibility of having that meeting in the afternoon. And I've got some reasons justification for making such a request, one of which, as you know, oftentimes we have our board meetings in the evenings and they're not very well attended. Sean, you pointed that out many times.
About every week.
About every week.
Twice.
That may be, you know, if we were to hold a meeting, one of the meetings each month, that last one's what I'm proposing each month, in the afternoon around two o'clock, that maybe, though, for those parents and members of the public that aren't able to make it out in the evenings for me, that maybe they'd be available or could attend during the day. Now, I know the county commission has one of their meetings in the afternoon each month, right?
Not anymore.
Oh, they're not doing it anymore.
That changed with the change of administration.
I was just curious, though, it was when I asked you how that, if that happened...
I don't think it made a huge difference. I mean, the, like, you still, if a school group came to commission meeting, they still came at ten o'clock. They didn't necessarily come in the evening, you know? If Sue Burton was bringing her kids to commission meeting, they would, they would come to the ten o'clock meeting or the six. It didn't seem to, the attendance was the same, I think, at commission meetings, but now they're all six.
Okay. Kind of had that in the back of my mind when I was thinking about this. So, you know, another, another reason or justification for me to consider would be the availability of our directors, just like, you know, with, kind of, you see, Mr. Dan giving your financial reports, Dana Smith being here to give his maintenance updates, that, you know, for them to be here already during the day and anyone else that we may want to bring in and involve, any of those types of discussions, you know, that those people would already be here at the office and wouldn't be, would have to wait to attend a meeting in the evening. So, you know, we could reserve those types of discussions for maintenance, transportation, if it's something to do with federal programs or technology, something, you know, maybe Mr. Daly here, that maybe those types of conversations and activities would take place at that particular meeting. We'd reserve it for that day. So that's when you'd see Mr. Pennington or Mr. Smith or some of the other guys I mentioned would be here to give their updates. So it's just food for thought. I just wanted to...
What time are you proposing that that means?
Well, I threw out two o'clock, but I, you know, two or three o'clock in the afternoon.
And then you would try to be consistent in that being the medium when the department heads make their presentation?
Yes.
So we'd kind of know in advance when that would be.
And I know it'd be, it'd probably be an issue for Mr. Baker, because I know he works. I thought about that. I know him, his availability, you know, how much sense that would make you, or his participation by phone possibly if he could be here, so, you know.
Well, at least if he were able to see this, he'd be, maybe he would be, as far as this is, maybe he could...
Of course, that's one less, you know, evening, night, if we're out, especially in the winter months.
With the fact the LSIC meeting, that's bad, right?
Of course, Sean, that benefits you, too.
Thank you for a moment.
Yeah. Yeah, I know you said two o'clock, but, you know, from my perspective, if you want to do it in an afternoon for presentation, especially if you are looking at the directors, I think, I'm thinking one o'clock. That's just my opinion, you know? If you have a couple, you've got plenty of time to be able to be in. But you can go for an afternoon.
You're a pretty good cook, aren't you?
I, you know, I've thought about that, too. We could have lunch, or...
Then we can have a media.
A media, like, you know, that's a great idea.
Yeah, wonderful idea.
Once a month.
So, yeah. Well, I didn't want to bribe you. I didn't want to front that out. Yeah, that was in the back of my mind.
I have a little white lunch, you know? I noticed for every, a third meeting in December, if we decide that, last year we only had two in December.
Well, I think...
Because of the holidays.
Yes. Of course, this is, this twenty-ninth meeting will be over this break. We don't always, we don't all take that break, you know?
Most of us are working. Very few of us take off at that time.
I don't know how, Bertie, as far as your office, I don't know if you want to get deals approved and all, but...
Um, I mean, I think we do, what's the second meeting, what's it at on that one?
The fifteenth.
In December, fifteenth.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it would matter. We didn't have that extra month. We do so much on the P card now. Anything that needs to, if we're timeless of the essence, we'll put it on the P card.
You're talking about maybe eliminating that twenty-ninth?
Well, I think that's what Larry...
Well, I don't care. I'm just, I'm just making a note of it.
No.
Third meeting's finally...
Of course, you know, then we roll into personnel season. We usually have a couple of work sessions, you know, that will also add, add if you're that's not here right now during the days, so we can have those conversations.
Does that typically happen, is that January?
January, early February.
We'll, we'll leave it on there, as be as may, cancel it, please. Get closer, we...
So we'll leave it, we'll leave it there.
We decide that we did, definitely.
But I just wanted to throw that idea out there, what you think about it. We don't have, there's obviously not a need to make a decision this evening. We've got another meeting, what is it, twenty-eighth?
We'll go through, sorry, last one.
Last one. Well, I mean, I have no problem with that.
I don't either. In one or two o'clock, five.
Carol, do you have any thoughts on that, man?
That's not with me.
Mary, would it be a...
Why should it be?
Really, we just need to see how Mr. Baker, what his thoughts are. I think everybody else is, you know, gives his ideas about one o'clock, apparently it's all well. I think we might get something. That's great.
I can have lunch.
All right. Sounds good. That'll be on Friday, so we'll find out from Rowdy and then we'll go from there. Okay. Any other comments or concerns, anyone else?
You know.
Bertie?
I need to discuss something. This, the Affordable Care Act, the resolution that we, just kind of need to inform you guys a little bit. Has, has that been discussed at any of the meetings that you guys have attended, state board meetings or anything? It all relates to the Obamacare. And what we have to do now is we have to look back, we have, right now, we're doing a twelve-month look back, and we have to look at all of our sub-employees, temporary, part-time people, and see if they've worked an average of thirty hours a week over this twelve-month period. If they have, then we have to offer those folks insurance. So I've just completed our first, it's called a standard measurement period, and we are going to have to offer insurance to two people for the month of ending April the thirtieth, which is going to be about ten thousand dollars per person if they do the family plan. So just to, just to kind of let you guys know, you know, it's an additional cost as Obamacare is. But then the bad part is that once you get through this, every month, I have to look and see if someone's been hired. Like, once I get through this May through April period, which is our first measurement period, then I have to look at May and see if anybody was hired in May, and then I do a look back period of eleven months. If they've worked an average of thirty hours, then I want to have to offer those folks insurance. So every month, we've got to look at this Obamacare. So every month, we could be bringing more people on. And once you offer that to those folks, you have to allow them to carry that for twelve months. If they don't pay their premiums, you know, then we can, you know, terminate their healthcare. But the part that you guys need to know is it's huge penalties if I got, if I get this wrong. Huge. I mean, and you guys need to know this, I mean, up to, we could be penalized up to a million dollars if I miss this. So, I mean, I've spent lots and lots of time...
You better stay on top of it.
I said, just call me Obama. There's, and there's two different types of penalty. There's a, there's a penalty for not offering, offering it to people, and that's the one that could be up to, could cost us a million dollars. It's two thousand per employee, and that's just based on five hundred employees. So that's eligibility penalty. Then there is affordability penalty, which means it has to be affordable based on number in the family and the federal poverty level. This I don't think we'll have a problem with because PIA is going to cover the affordability portion. And there's another penalty that deals with IRS reporting, seeing how we have to do W2s on all our employees, and now we're going to have to do a Obamacare, a federal documentation on employees. So each of those you get wrong.
Will all employees get that or just these people that you're talking about here?
Uh...
Will all of our regular employees want to have something on their W2 showing?
Actually, they're going to have a separate tax document.
Okay.
So it'll show, yes, this person was covered, they did have affordable healthcare for, you know, it was offered to them, they chose not to take it. And I've already ran into a situation where we have a person I'm getting ready to offer to, she's already went on to the exchange and picked up healthcare because of her tax returns. So she went and picked it up, so I'm going to meet with her tomorrow and we'll have to work through that. So at the end of the year, I'm probably going to get a call from the IRS to say, did you offer this person affordable healthcare? And, you know, I'll have to have documentation, either she took it, she refused it. So it is really a big deal, that could be a potential huge penalties for the, for the county. And it's, this is a statewide, well, it's a nationwide rollout, but, you know, all the treasures are working on this right now. And, you know, we've met with lawyers here probably three or four times over the past couple of years trying to get ready for this rollout that we have to implement this month. So it's a big deal.
The employees, these individuals, they will pay a portion of this premium and then...
That we pay. We pay. We pay. They'll be treated just like a regular employee, like I'll have to pay a portion, and then they have to pay, you know, they pay their portion, and the county has to pay the employer here.
I just don't understand how with substitutes, if their length, if they work varies, how you can know for sure if they qualify.
Well, it's what I, we have to run all these sequel queries and look, you know, how many days did they work from point A to point B? So then I've had to sit down and I'd have to look at every month, month, what's the magic number every month? What's that magic number that I'm looking for? How many days?
Any type of substitute, no matter what they might be?
Yeah, or any part-time temporary person, interventionist, or parent coordinators, well, not sure, parent coordinators, anybody that works for the school.
But it's conceivable that a person could qualify or have to be offered that and then the next month's really not qualified, but you have to give it to them for a year anyway.
Doesn't matter. Once, once they qualify, you got to carry them for twelve months, you know? So it's, it's a huge undertaking with, you know, huge fines if, you know, we get it wrong.
But it's for our substitutes only, and it is, as long as they pay their portion of the premiums. Once they do not, then it's kind of default, like they're not longer than usual.
If they were a sub and got to be a regular person, they just could burn over with that.
Right. Yeah, they just, just roll. So it's, it's a huge undertaking that we're trying to cover all the bases, you know, certainly don't want to subject the board to penalties.
Thank you. I know, I know the commission must have thought with this issue earlier, you know, when they were doing their budget, and Sean, I'll be aware of that, since it was lurking here. Okay. Anything else from anyone?
I do, Laura, this is, I just wanted to bring up today, Dana Smith told me that he has an appointment with the ADP on July the ninth regarding the electricity going over to the new sign. So that is already set up. I didn't know if you all were aware of that.
What was the date?
July the ninth. Also, there is a, an onsite review this week of the pre-construction review on the windows. They're coming out to look at the schools to get that set up. So they'll be doing the measurements and what do they need to, what do they require to getting started.
And who's that? Is that the architect or...
Yes.
That's right. That's right, you're in here. I was wondering about this, you were the...
I just didn't see that you asked.
I was driving by, looking at the school, I'm sorry. Okay. Anything else? Okay, if not, we'll adjourn it to June the thirty, six o'clock. Your county office, can I have a motion, please? Carol makes a motion, can I have a second? Great, second, is that all yes? Is that all yes? Okay.